Sean Wadsworth, Chair of the Planning Board, calling the meeting to order at six thirty-two. And present we have.
Curtis Coleman.
And.
Morris West.
Uh, Morris, I'll appoint you as a voting member for this meeting. Morris is our alternate. Alright, so. Just take a minute to read through. Morris, you're still reading. Oh, it's eighty-six, not eighty-nine.
Did I write eighty-nine?
Should be, should be eighty-nine, right? Point seven acres, this one right here.
Uh, which one you want on the screen?
Eighty-nine.
Yeah, you're right, eighty-nine. No, you got it right. I mentioned eighty-six because eighty-nine was my recollection as well.
So I have read this, um, but the rest of our board members haven't, so we're just giving them some time.
Absolutely.
To take it in. This is Trun, my condolences.
Well, it's, uh, not easy, like. Wasn't, uh, wasn't expected.
Hmm.
Um, but it was not suffering. And it was.
So, the fair board members, it's just a preliminary consultation. And so, just, we'll have a little discussion and. You guys read through enough to?
Oh, you want me to do the phone?
Oh, yeah, I guess so.
Do you want to do this, Curtis?
Just dial the number.
Yeah, just dial the number straight.
Okay, and then it'll tell you to punch in. This is, we had teleconference system set up during COVID, um, and it was mandatory then, it's kind of optional at this point because we are now meeting face-to-face again, so.
Hello, please enter your six-digit conference code.
It's more access, yeah.
Welcome to free conference calling. The conference has not started. If you are the host, please enter your four-digit host code to open the conference. If you are not the host, please press the star key to connect to the conference and wait. We will now connect you to your call. You are the first attendee in this conference. Your host has joined.
Yes.
Thank you, Morris. Alright. So, uh, preliminary consultation from Corey Trun and we also. And, uh, I just want to say it right, the improved order of.
Redman.
Redman, not the Redman, just Redman. Improved order of Redman. Um, about map seven parcel eighty-nine and using this property for a not-for-profit organization. Alright, so I'll just turn it over to you guys and share what you're thinking about.
So, we want to look at this in two ways, and my name is Rob Truman, I am the son of Corey and Tom, who, um, are the owners, and from the, mortgage standpoint, I'm the point of contact now, but, um, so what we're looking for is, uh, twofold. Number one, we want to see if this property is something that we can utilize for the Redman. And to, as a clubhouse, and, and I think it's important that we really go into how the property will be used, by the Redman as a clubhouse, and then, so that's with us still owning it, or my mom still owning it. But the deal that we have worked out is at some point tran- uh, ownership of, transfer of ownership will, we would like to take place. So we want to make sure that with the transfer of ownership, that would be acceptable too, so it's two parts. So, I guess the first thing is to understand, I think she did a nice job of kind of describing who the Redman are, and, and yes, I am, and my dad was a Redman member, um, and these gentlemen here are Redmen as well. So, um, to understand first of all, who, who we are and how we utilize the property. So, um, this property actually lends itself very nicely to our goals because we have one section of the house that was never finished. And that unfinished section of the house would actually work well as some office space for us and an area for us to meet with each other, um, and then also provide some storage of things, um, that we would need. And then the other part of the house, we'd have a caretaker, member of, of our group that would live there, whether it be, um, you know, someone and their spouse, or a single person, or whatever. So the, the type of usage would not be anything remotely like you would think of a regular business. Okay, and, and yes, we are nonprofit, but it's not the source of the nonprofit activity, I guess is the way to put that. Uh, we have, um, two meetings a month that we gather. And sometimes, typically, that means a dozen to fourteen people. It can mean more, there are more people, and obviously, in the group that don't, um, come to every meeting. We have what is called Pocahontas, the degree of Pocahontas, which is the sister organization to ours. And there's five or six maybe that meet a couple, uh, twice a month as well. And then occasionally, we might have another gathering just to, of, um, camaraderie-type gathering. So, we are a charitable organization that wants to do as many things as we can for people in need in this whole area, not just Albany, not just Conway, but the whole general area. One of the things I always say, you've all heard me say it many times, the only problem we have is that not enough people know who we are, so we don't get a chance to help enough people. Um, so we're always out there trying to make our name, you know, we do things like the Easter Bunny and Santa, and so on and so forth, so. Occasionally, smaller groups of people might meet in the offices or something to, you know, just be together, a gathering point. The few times that we do have meetings there, it's, it's not going to be anything more than if a family had to cook it out there, at their house, or something like that, and if we, you know, if it was a concern, we could make arrangements to say, okay, we'll make sure that there's, nobody's parking on the street, it's not a busy street, but it's right over a hill, so it's, it's something that we, we've always, and my parents living there, um, we've always been really cautious of ourselves.
The three of you, would, would you like to share anything?
Well, I don't know if he explained, but the Improved Order of Redmen is actually the oldest fraternal organization in the United States. Uh, we were originally the Sons of Liberty, we were the ones that did the Boston Tea Party. They stayed together following the revolution, and then around the War of eighteen twelve, they decided to formally organize, and in nineteen oh six, we were issued a new charter by President Roosevelt, uh, so that we could become a nonprofit. At the time, they were doing life insurance for the members, and, you know, that's faded out, but we still do, are very active with, some national charities, uh, right now, we. The charity we picked is an organization called Homes for Our Vets, that works on building handicap-accessible houses for post-nine-eleven disabled veterans. Uh, we also help maintain faith of our fathers' chapel at Valley Forge. You know, we, like you said, you know, when we talk about clubhouse, it's not like you would picture a roadhouse, or a motorcycle group, or anything like that, there's, you know, we're not asking for a liquor license, we, you know. Our, you know, if we have any receptions, it's usually just a cookout or coffee and everything afterwards. We're just looking for a place to be able to have our regular meetings, and, uh, we'd like to take this over. We, one of the fundraisers that we do are, you know, auctions, but this would primarily be, you know, just a place to store things, until we could, you know, do it at another site, you know, when we collect things that we're going to auction off, but. It shouldn't be an increase of traffic on that road, it shouldn't be any greater demand on any services, or anything of the town, or any distress to the neighbors, you know, because we all are taxpayers in our respective communities, and like the fact that things can be done hassle-free if people are responsible and smart, so. You know, we would not be a burden on the town. You know, we've got several charities right now here locally that we work on, we have a single-parent relief fund, you know, for any single parent that's getting behind in bills, you know, we'll take on, at least for one month, you know, paying off their bills, we've done scholarships for kids going to.
Drum school.
Drum school, they've raised, I don't know, how much, about five hundred last year for, attributed to Annie's Angels, which is a statewide program that helps disabled vets that can't afford service animals adopt shelter animals, so they can have a companion animal. We also raised about six to seven hundred dollars, you know, for Toys for Tots, and, you know, various other things. Uh, they've helped out the Dinner Bell and whatnot, so. It's nothing that the town of Albany should be, you know, worried about when we get together, but.
I, I think that one of the things that you mentioned that is really important for me to try to articulate as well is what the group is that's meeting there and what it means to have a clubhouse, it's not, like you said, we're not getting a liquor license, we're not getting together and drinking, we're getting together to have, you know, uh, planning session meetings and, you know, like a board of directors-type meeting, um, that's what the gatherings are that we have there, and then occasionally, we have cookouts and stuff, but, we're not, we're not talking about a rough crowd. You know, we, we, um. The door's not open to just anybody to come be a part of the Redman, I guess is my point there. We are a selective group, and we feel like we have upstanding individuals from our surrounding communities that are a part of it, and we have no interest in turning this or any other location into, um, any kind of party house. We're just looking for a place to, um, call, have, call home for our operations and whatnot. Do either of you have anything you'd like to share?
Um, just that, you know, some of the charity work that we do is not just involving, involving, uh, giving money, uh, to, you know, donations to charity groups, we actually will go out and do work at people's homes. We have handyman that are some of the members, so we'll go and help, um, you know, repair some door, or help with some other things like that, so we do it in the local community, and that's really the focus, is just the local community of, of this area, so the towns that are surrounded here. Some of the meetings that, um, were mentioned, other meetings, uh, I'm, I'm head of the finance committee, so I would have occasional finance meetings that are separate from the, um, regular meeting. So those are the type of things, and it'd be nice to have just one location, keep files in one location, so the other members of the finance board can access them, not me holding on to them or whatever. And those are, those are some of the things, and, um, it's not, and most of what we're going to be doing is external to the actual facility, it's just that's our gathering point. And, um, and the, the location is very nice for us because we're scattered in the communities adjacent, and it's, and it's like a, about the best location for all of us to reach too, so it was, that was a, uh, a bonus when this came up. But, uh, I'm not a long-term person here, I was not born in the valley, I, I moved up here from Mass. Uh, I always grew up with doing charity work, and finding this organization really made me feel good, and that's why I've been throwing myself into it. So I was, um, one of the first members in the Pinnacle, in New Hampshire, so. Um, Jason, I had met Jason before, and he told me about it, I've been act, very active in Boy Scouts, so I've been doing charity work for a long time, and it just really, um, got to me. And there's other, um, Boy Scouts too, both, I'm an Eagle Scout, Lucas is an Eagle Scout, so.
We actually have four Eagle Scouts from the Tamworth troop, three active and one that is joining up with us later this month. So, yeah, it's, it's kind of interesting to see, like, that's the, the, the type of work that we do, and we attract that type of people that are interested in that type of stuff, so.
And for myself, I grew up in the valley, valley, lived in Tamworth, went to Kennet and everything, and right through Boy Scouts, being all those different things that we were saying before, and it really is one of those things where we just want to go out, reach and help as many people as possible, and even if anything else other than this meeting comes to be, where if you know someone in need that you're able to help out and reach out to us, that we can maybe help and reach out and help them in whichever way we can.
Yep, great.
Now, questions for us and how we might use the property or anything like that, or from any of you?
Well, I have just, so where do you meet now? Is it just people's houses?
Well, kind of, sort of, if you're familiar with the boxing gym up the road here?
Yeah, just, just over the border in Madison, yeah.
Yeah, he takes his whole ring down, pulls up his mats, takes the, all the punching bags down. Every other, well, two Wednesdays a month, so we can meet there, and, um, you know, he's, it's great that he does that for us, but it is a hassle for him, we would love to be able to just have our meeting hall, the chairs all set up, and just say, alright, we'll come back and, and meet there again, and in, in the winter, in the summertime.
We do outdoor meetings.
Down the Chicago Road.
We used to meet in my garage. Yeah, it's, we've been, we've been looking, we rented the Brown Church for a while, we were in the Madison Library for a little bit, and then COVID hit, and, you know, so it'd be nice to have one place where we don't have to keep throwing everything into a box.
Yeah.
In addition to everything else, I'm also past state president, or what's called Great Sation, for the Reservation of Maine, which holds the, issues the charter for us here. You know, I'm also on the National Board.
That was one of my next questions, what, what, this chapter, or what do you call it?
We, because the, uh, in order to avoid detection by the royal authorities, the Sons of Liberty adopted the terminology and usages of the Iroquois Nation. And we've kept that, that's where the term Redman comes from, so. Our president is referred to as a Sation, vice presidents are Sagamores, uh, lodges are tribes. The state chapter is, you know, Great Council in the area that it is, is Reservation.
Yeah, so we are a tribe, and somebody mentioned Pinnacle, our tribe name is Pinnacle.
And this location would become a reservation then?
No, 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 it would just be.
It would be the tribe.
Yeah, just, just for us, uh, once the Reservation of Maine, when they have their monthly business meetings, they do go from, uh, tribe to tribe, you know, location to location. Belfast, Maine, Sevago, Maine, and here.
Those are the nearest ones?
Yeah, the next closest one is over in Sevago, that is Presumska Tribe, and then there is Terrateen Tribe in Belfast, yeah. We're active with the Great Council in Massachusetts, you know, they'll come up when we have our, you know, when the Reservation does things, or when they just want to come up for visit, but when the Reservation has their meetings, because so many people have to fly in from the National Board as well, they do that over in Portland, so.
So if I get the feeling of where that question was going, um, this is for the tribe that we're looking for?
Yeah.
And regardless of how big the organization grows, this is just going to be for the tribe? You know, other tribes will, we, we, will be in other locations, yeah.
Basically, what we're looking to do is set up a town clerk's office for us. You know, the wild, I would say that it wouldn't get any wilder than a selectman's meeting, or a town meeting. But I've grown up in Vermont, my, the European branch of my mother's family moved to my hometown in seventeen ninety and stayed. My family's been very active in local politics, so I know that sometimes that can get a little lively.
You notice he did not say school board meeting. That's the word I come out of.
Well, no, my father was chairman of the school board for a long time, and that, that's another thing, but, uh, you know. No, as, as far as being disruptive, or, you know, high-traffic, or anything, you know. You're looking at, if you look at the tapes of your last selectman's meeting, that's probably our attendance, you know, twice a week, uh, twice a month.
And so it's twice a month, is every other Wednesday, basically?
Yeah.
And then the, the daughters of Pocahontas?
The degree of Pocahontas, they meet every other Wednesday.
They meet on the same day?
The opposite.
Yeah, they actually meet on the same days, but earlier in the day. Yeah, they, they.
Oh, they change that?
Yeah, they change it, yeah, they meet at noon, and we meet at eight.
Eight, yeah.
Okay. And then you occasionally have cookout, basically?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, last Wednesday, we had a, a cookout, just to show everybody the house.
Yeah.
We had a cookout up there, and it was twenty, I, I don't know how many cars were there, it was less than that, but there were twenty-some people there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, like.
No, no cars really on the streets?
No, I didn't notice anybody on the street either, so.
Fortunately, the way we designed the, the yard, we have the horseshoe driveway, plus it goes up to the other garage, and there's parking to the side of, well, there's actually quite a bit of parking, um, available there, so.
So you had all, you had a cookout social, and no cars were parked down the street?
Not that I know of, I don't believe so.
Right?
Yeah. And if there were, we could in the future say, you know, make sure, because there was room for people to park in the yard. It's the first time they were there, so not everybody knew exactly where to go.
Yeah.
She and I have been there since ninety-eight, so we know where to park. Yeah, when we do have big events planned, we usually have sites for them to take place, like we are organizing a motorcycle ride, and anticipating about thirty or forty people, but we'll be beginning and ending, we're working out with the American Legion, so it would be, you know, beginning and ending over there, uh, so that wouldn't be in the neighborhood, you know.
Other questions? So, what?
I just wanted to mention that, um, when we were talking about the, uh, charity and whatnot, I don't know how many of you knew Tom, but we have done, through the years, he, he was auctioning for fifty, about fifty years. And, um, we have done charity auctions up the kazoo. And raised tons of money, millions of money for different organizations, and it's what we do, you know, it's just, it's what we like doing.
Charity and giving has been a part of our family. You know, I'm forty-nine, and my dad says, would always say, sorry, he's still present for me. That I'm the only auctioneer he knows of in the state of New Hampshire that's forty-nine years old and has forty-four years of auction experience, which is a big god's honest truth, five years old, they had me on the microphone, and, um, we, we had an incredible run together.
Will you do auctions there?
No, the only thing we might do there is store some merchandise for some online auctions, and then we'll be mailing them out, but we won't do onsite auction.
So you figure like, you're tra, I mean, this, these boards always ask about traffic count, right?
Right, sure.
Coming and going, so you say, I mean, an average would be a dozen cars, I mean, the most, right?
Yeah, I think to, our, most of our meetings was probably less than a dozen cars, sorry for breaking down.
Yeah. Yeah, I knew you, I knew you, Dad.
Yeah.
Nice guy. So, I mean, it, to me, I mean, there's all kinds of other things we could talk about, I guess, but the traffic doesn't seem like that's, I mean, you have another nonprofit right up the street that has a substantially bigger traffic count than that, so.
That's true.
The usual traffic would be whoever is going to be living there, you know, like where we live there.
No, you're missing state, like, if you were to say your mission statement for this group is basically it's a charitable foundation that helps people, right?
Yeah, I'm sure there's multiple pieces, layers to that, but.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's your goal, I mean, that's why this group exists, is to help people in the community.
Charity and civic, you know, civic improvement, charity.
And, and of course, the byproduct is the camaraderie.
Yeah.
Among us, um, we've been able to, yeah. The, the one thing I wanted to do if I could is to direct your attention to the second to last page in the packet. It's from two thousand and four. My father met before the then-active Planning Board, and item number one is relating to that. And, um, because he ran, the whole time that they lived there, he ran an in-home business, um, and they lived there, and, um, you can read it, I won't read it for, to you, but, um, I don't see it being any different in terms of what we are trying to do from what he did. Um, other than the fact that occasionally, there would be more group meetings, um, I don't see a huge difference.
We planned no signage, we planned no change in lighting.
And, and it's funny, there, the house, the use of the house before us was, um, Arthur Levitt's father, and he was the, um, firewarden. The frame for his sign still exists on the property.
Yeah.
Um, but we, we probably finally, after, what, what year is this, two thousand? Twenty-two, after the twenty-four years of being there, we might actually take that sign frame down, but, um.
We gave up the sign.
Yeah. It was funny, probably the first couple of years that we were there, people would be stopping in to get fire permits from us all the time.
Could be grandfather, don't take it down.
Yeah, yeah, right? Um, but just to go back to, one of the first things I mentioned was, the two things we're looking at is, like, we want, Mom and I want to rent the facility right now to the Redman to use for that purpose, and once they're in a financial position to buy it, then we want to sell it to them, and assuming that, first of all, the use now is okay, and then, second of all, after a transfer of ownership, the use will still be okay, so. And unfortunately, we have been trying for well over a year to try to sell the property in some way or another, and, um, the bank, the mortgage company, through COVID, has been very reasonable to work with for us, but in the same breath, there has been, like, I moved my parents out of the house into, um, my second home, because it was a little easier for them living, especially with my dad's bad back and whatnot, and, um, they, when I sold that house, then they were renting a place, and they, um, were trying to sell it, as I mentioned, so they fell behind on mortgage payments and so on and so forth. So, the bank has now given us, until the end of this month, to do something, either hand the keys over, I'm sorry to get personal with your financial stuff, Mom, but it's important, I think, or make an agreement with the Redman. And we weren't purposely trying to wait till the last minute.
Yeah.
Um, it just, over the last few weeks, people came over from the Redman and actually saw the house in a different state than when they saw it originally, a year ago, when they were helping us clean stuff out. And now it is really a quite lovely home that they realize in, in space and whatnot, so. I don't mean to say that to put any kind of rush on you, but I just want you to know the position that we're in. So if there's not an opportunity for you to make a decision. So if there's not an opportunity for you to make a decision that quickly, then that means we know when we walk away from here, that it's not something that we can do. That's the only reason why I'm saying that.
So I think from the planning board and the Town of Albany's, so we just have to adhere to the ordinances, right? What the ordinances are saying, we can go, go through this, there's a couple different areas or avenues. So this is a residential zone, and this is a non, well, kinda hybrid residential use, but with, and with a nonprofit entity, business organization, using the thing, the, the same property at the same time. So, and here, here's our little section on home occupation, home business. We'll just get, home occupation is really just one person with no employees, so that would not be this. Possibly, this would fit under home business. A commercial or business activity conducted on a lot being used for residential purposes that exceeds the standards of home occupation. Home occupation, again, really just means you own the home, and you're running your own business, and you're your only employee, or maybe someone else in your family, but once you have other upside people coming in, uh, home occupation no longer applies, and home business is what, if, you start looking at. So, a business activity on a lot being used for residential purposes that exceeds the standards for home occupation requires a special exception as set forth in sections Roman seven B one, and must meet the following requirements. The special exception is talking about going to the ZBA to get an exception. Must meet these requirements. Home business shall be carried on by residents of the premises, so that sounds like that fits, you would have a person living there, caretaker, that is also part of the entity. Uh, it shall be clearly secondary to the use of the premise for dwelling purposes. That, that one could be either way, I guess.
Yeah, I know that we look at it from the standpoint of what the property is differently, but in terms of the amount of use, that's probably.
Primarily residential. Usage, usage wise, yeah. Um, and not all, all to the character of the neighborhood or reduce the value of any surrounding property. Um, three, it shall result no external evidence of the activity, and shall not have an adverse effect on the environment or the surrounding properties as a result of noise, odors, smoke, dust, light, soil, water, air pollution, excessive increase in traffic, or impartsing requirements, or as a result of other nuisances. Four, shall have no outdoor display of goods, no outdoor storage of materials unless screened uh, from surrounding properties by a natural structure. Five, the residents or existing building shall not provide window displays or other characteristics or features normally associated with commercial or business use. And six, there shall be no change in the exterior experience, appearance of the residence or other structures on the property as a result of the use. Unless specifically approved or required by the Board of Adjustment. So this is the, another entity in the town, zoning board of adjustment, if you're not familiar with it, it's the quasi judicial thing. So, planning board's kinda bounded by what the ordinances say, and we just basically execute the process of saying this fits in this category, or it doesn't fit in this category. If there's an area in between that we can't resolve here, then it would go to zoning board of adjustment, so that's what that's referencing. And then it goes on to what the zoning board of adjustment is, and how that process goes. So if you're thinking of trying to fit this under home business, these are the criteria. Alternately, I'm gonna go up here a ways. Because, so this is Roman three, land use is permitted, residential zone, that's where we are. And we have lot requirements, this is a grandfathered lot, or a lot of record, as it were. So it already exists, you already have your driveway, you already have the house, that's all fine. Uses permitted in the residential area, and then we're kinda come to number four, other uses permitted. The following permitted uses are subject to site plan review and approval of the planning board. Additional conditions may be imposed by the planning board to ensure that the use does not violate the intent of this ordinance. It's consistent with the goals established in the Town's master plan, and the conditions set forth in the special exceptions section of this ordinance. Here are the other uses permitted, churches, parishes, religious, uh, B, school, C, community center, hall, lodge, park, playground, operated by a government unit or a nonprofit organization. So, uh, this is kinda the other avenue, right, there's the home business, or um, just declaring that you're gonna go for site plan review, and and it would fall under this, uh, you know, number four, C, a community center operated by a nonprofit organization. That's the two pathways. I don't know that we do decide right now, I don't know, I don't know.
Do you know if any other, has there ever, have we been in Albany, if any others, like, permitted? As the board, has the planning board granted?
Not in the time I've been on it, but, you know, I've not been on it that long. Tim Mountain is in the residential zone, is.
I would say it went under the nonprofit organization.
Yeah, and Tim Martin certainly went through site plan review. So basically, it's this difference between going through site plan review, which requires notifying all the abutting properties and having a public hearing. And that, that is the site plan review process, it would be the next scheduled meeting, I know you're talking about a timeline. And the and then there's this other, maybe this fits here, I'm not honestly sure, of, uh, home business. Is this use, proposed use, exceeding home business, is the question? Does it need site plan review? This would be kind of the thing to figure out for our board. We don't have to figure it out right now, we can discuss and get some consult with the select board and with, you know, our legal counsel if we need to, and we definitely get you an answer as soon as possible. But I'm open to discussion right now as well, uh, for what anyone's thinking on the board as far as where this fits, it's, it's a little, it's in between.
Well, would site plan review require plans, drawings, anything to go along with that?
I mean, that's the whole checklist, right, but then you can also exempt all those things, right, just say.
That's not quick, I mean, if they want something quick, that's not quick. I mean, unless you exempt those certain things.
Correct. There's no change, I mean, nothing on the property is changing, so like, the houses, that, I can see exempting pretty much everything. Because it already, it's, it's the use, not the, um, construction of something new.
Yeah, there would be no, we plan no change to the footprint of the property.
Yeah, it's really because it's in a residential zone, this is the sticky part, um, you know, if it was under sixteen, in our commercial zone. Uh, and it's, it's just making sure that we are doing our due diligence for all the neighbors, and not just allowing entities to start popping up without the process going through that, but.
I looked over that site plan review checklist, and I was like, oh my goodness. That's, that's right here.
Usually, you know, site plan really is like, mostly it's someone's building a new thing. A whole new building and a new business, and you gotta go through all the stuff to make sure all the, all the things are right.
Change of use.
Yeah, change of use, this is really just change of use, that's all this is. The building is gonna stay the same as you're speaking, and traffic pattern is essentially the same.
But theoretically, I mean, I would think that the, the the neighbors would be probably the most sensitive thing, at least them knowing.
Knowing, yes.
For they could offer input. But, I mean, that's I don't really, I don't think it would be an issue, but, but I think that we, we, we have an obligation to some extent.
I agree, I agree, and the pathway for that is site plan review, home business does not have any notification.
Right, so if they get an exemption from the ZBA for home business, so then that's that's a root also.
That's a root also, but ZBA takes a month at least as well.
At least.
So kinda the question, because you have this time constraint, is can you call it a home business and start renting? And then would that just be the end of it, or would it, but we're saying, really, it's the neighbors that do need a, a say, so it would be gosh, I don't know.
Well, as far as renting, yes, I mean, you can rent.
You can rent it to whoever you want.
The house you're on, the whole, the whole chapter.
Here's, they're separate things, right, yes, you can rent it to whoever you want, right, that, that does not need anything from planning board or town approval, so if you just wanna go ahead and rent to the you can just go right ahead and do that, there's no town anything about that. And then getting to the use of using it for your tribe, uh, the organization using it in a residential zone, that, I really, I think what we're leaning towards because of notifying the neighbors and having that process play out, would be site plan review. I don't know how, like, how you're receiving that.
So when, I guess the, um, the site plan review, what you're saying is you're, if I'm interpreting correctly, you're willing to accept everything except for the notification of neighbors, pretty much.
We would go through, we would go through the whole package.
There's a lot there, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm not holding you cut and dry here, but I don't think.
In general, as far as needing engineer plans or anything like that, you know, that's.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot of stuff in there, but, um, is there an option if, and I, I, I appreciate that too, I appreciate that the neighbor's knowing what, what's going on there, cause all of a sudden, you know, we haven't had much more traffic than a couple times a week, just going to check on the house and clean stuff up and whatever. For the last maybe two years, to, now it's gonna be used on a regular basis, which for the neighborhood means it's gonna look nicer, it's gonna be well-kept better, you know, things like that, but um, there will be an increase of traffic, more to a normal level. And, um, is there another way of having a meeting or offering, notifying and offering a meeting to neighbors? Is there another way to do that?
It would be outside of, we would just be getting things up at that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, no, I, yeah.
We kinda have to do, we either have to fit it into home business, or fit it into site plan review. And I think we're leaning towards site plan review because of the notification of the neighbors, and that this is a change of use in a residential zone. We could not get site plan review together until next month's meeting, uh, just cause it takes the time to process that.
And that would be the first Monday of June?
No, so we meet second Monday?
Second Monday, okay.
Just the thirteenth? We're, we're at the ninth right now.
So, I mean, we can try the mortgage company and see if, let them know that we have.
You have till thirty-third, you, you have the thirty-first.
Yeah, yeah, and it's because they've been, they've worked with us so long, and they, they've been really decent to work with too, um, but they, they said to us on the phone Friday, they said, look, all right, we need to make a decision by the end of this month. And they know what's going on, they know that we're meeting today, it's that nature, and I think that, you know, maybe the option there is we go back to them and say, look, here's the deal. They've been, they've been good to work with, so maybe they will say, okay, since you have something that strong in place, then, all right, we'll give you that extra two weeks. Can't speak for any, everybody, but, you know, it's, 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 you know, it's cutting it close, but, um, unfortunate, it, like I said, it's unfortunate that the Redman didn't see the house as that opportunity, cause over the winter, you can't tell and things like that, and and it wasn't until just recently that they got a chance to really see what the house was like.
Unfortunately, when we closed our auction business, everything came to the house.
Ah, yes.
And I would try, start trying to make sense of it, and I'd pick something up, and I'd ask, where am I gonna put it? So that, that kinda is how everything ended up.
Yes, life is messy.
Very messy.
But they didn't, and, you know, it tied together with health issues and various other factors, yeah. Here we are. Well, I, I really, really appreciate your time, and.
And I'd, I'd be glad to, you know, write something to the bank saying that, you know, we will schedule the meeting for whenever that date, the thirteenth. We'll have a site plan review, and we can't predict the outcome, but.
If they know that there's something official in place, that might.
That might, yeah, that might, if you, and you and Mom have been communicating back and forth.
Email, yeah, and site plan review does have a cost, uh, you know, to the interested party, um, so the the notification to the neighbors is certified mail, it's like seven dollars something per lot that you have to notify, so. It ends up being two, three hundred dollars by the time.
If it, if it ends up working, you know, that's well worth it, yeah.
Yeah, you know, there's, there's precedence for this, so I don't think it's a big, a huge stomach block, it's just your time.
Yeah.
And, and that the neighbors are on board.
Yeah, if you, um, would you mind, could you still pull the map up? Just to, yeah, because it's, it's, the, the, uh, property, um, is funky around there. Um, you know, I, I, I wanted to double check, all right, so Arthur's son and the other trailer that abuts us, so does the gentleman that owns the airstrip, and.
So it's this property here, eighty-nine.
So it's just the, the two neighbors across the street, and, and is that all that it, or do we require, we require, is those four properties?
Just the bottom sale?
Okay.
Five, including the airstrip.
No, he's, he's behind and.
You know what, that, the two trailers are on Arthur's.
Arthur's, yes.
Yeah, that's right.
That's what I'm saying, and then Arthur's old house, and then the, the guy who bought Arthur's house, and the one that he, yeah, Steve built. So it's four properties.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's, um, that's great.
I can't see which one's ours.
Ours is the one that has this arrow coming off it, right underneath the arrow.
I can't see the arrow.
Oh, not an arrow, but a line, so he's.
Where the cursor's moving here in the middle.
See that?
So that lot size is a little under acre?
Yeah, so that's why it's, it's a
It's point seven.
It's a grandfather lot.
Lot of record.
Yeah, lot, yeah, there's no grandfathering in the state of New Hampshire, I know, I deal with that too. Lot of record.
Yeah, and then I, and the only thing I can think is, you know, you, if renting in the meantime to help keep things moving, that's, that's on your guys' end.
Right, 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 so, okay, well, we know what we need to do, very appreciative of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
So, this, would you then, in communicating, tell us exactly what items we need to address on this? And we'll address them just as quickly as we could.
Uh, we can go through that.
You want a copy? You want a copy of it right here?
Sure. You have, you have that, you should get that copy.
Okay, well, I think the important information is what you identified.
Right, I have my own pocket. Alright, cool. I just have this one, then I can print out another. So there's an application, which this is the basic stuff, kind of much like what you did for the preliminary consultation. Carryout improvements, there aren't really any. Provide and install standard street signs, there aren't any. Give the town on demand proper deeds, you've already done that. Save the town harmless from any obligation, uh, blah, blah, blah. And five, make no changes whatsoever in the final plat, it's already platted. And obtain a vibe by the state, all required state permits as applicable. So it's already a lot of record. Most of the stuff is just moot. And that is the end of the actual application. So then we can move on to the checklist. Paper one there, and I'll just go through the screen. Okay, so number one, a completed application, doable. Five copies of a plat, plan. I think for this purpose, we can just say the tax map is adequate with the realtor stuff here, right? I don't think you need to create anything. Huh?
So, I don't need to provide that with it?
Don't need to provide a plat, plan. There's no changes to the lot or the building. Um, this part would need to be noted. Number three, notification, list of names and addresses. Three sets of pre-addressed labels for the abutters, the applicant, the owner. Uh, you don't have a surveyor. You don't have an agent. Are there any easements on the property?
No, no, no.
Restrictions, no easements, just a lot, okay. And then the filing fees, we'll get to that. What the filing fees are after. Uh, it has a drive, does it have two driveways or just one?
Yeah, it's a horseshoe.
Horseshoe, okay. That's been in existence for some long time.
Before we bought, yeah.
Yeah. I think all lots are supposed to just have one driveway, but.
Depends on the frontage.
Depends on the frontage.
Does depend on the frontage.
Yeah, you can have, you can have a, you can have a horseshoe depending on, I don't know what the.
This one doesn't have enough frontage, but it's a lot, it's a lot of record, so.
Four hundred feet.
But most of the, most of the driveways in the town are non-conforming. Because, you know, but new lots in a new subdivision, you'd need a couple hundred foot per driveway and site and all that thing. And this one's also, this one's fine.
All applicable federal, state and town approvals or certifications, uh, there are. Uh, I think the only thing would maybe be the fire chief. Right? This is, we would be notifying the fire chief.
So we need to.
And getting a occupancy permit, maybe, right? Does this sound? Yeah, I, I think this is gonna be needed, right? This is gonna be a nonprofit entity having gatherings in a residential zone, right? This seems like a must.
Yeah.
Fire chief approval. So we would need fire chief.
So is that some, do we notify or do you notify?
You would have to go see, um, Steve Solomon, um, from the town of Conway, the fire chief, so you'll see Steve Solomon.
Or communicate with him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Communicating.
Okay.
And he would just have to sign off on it.
Okay.
Saying it's, the space would be acceptable to have a meeting with twelve people or twenty people or whatever.
And he, uh, he would be setting a limit presumably.
I would suspect so.
Yeah.
Okay. And then if we ever finished another section off, would we come and have him back to say, how about this section type of deal?
Yes, would need updated approval.
Sure.
Um, right, so you, you'd have to go through kind of this again, right, to get, uh, if it's gonna be a change of use? If it's gonna change in size, if it becomes a change of use, you'd have to come through and just probably do a ZBA or what?
I don't know. That, that's a great, that is a great.
That's, yeah, that's, that's my.
We have to go look at.
Let's worry about the fire in front of us.
Change of use to. Right, for now. Um, alright, so then moving on to plat requirements, these are.
What about number seven, sorry? Copies of existing protected or restricted covenants? Oh, okay, we don't have those.
Right, so just the deeds, so you just have to, you've already provided them, but make sure that those are part of the file.
Okay, put it in there.
And there's no other easements or restrictions other than the deed itself? As far as you know? Uh, but that would be something to verify. Uh, so then moving on to plat requirements, um, this is all gonna be waived because we're not plating anything. Pretty sure, but I'm just gonna read through it and make sure. You don't need a new survey. Are there property pins?
What was that?
Other pins?
Pins for the property, property boundaries with the neighbors.
Pins?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, I think I saw one.
I know there's some flags.
Yeah.
I think I saw one, um, to the.
Right at the garage.
Right at the driveway, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause, um, the person who owns the airstrip um, did a site, uh, had a survey, so his pins are there, the key.
We can delete it.
That's our, our side, yeah.
I forgot to.
I really, I don't think we even I mean, it'd be nice to have a survey, but I, I think we can waive it, right? They're just using the building, they're not expanding.
They're not changing anything.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Be nice to have a survey, but that's also a big cost. A time delay. Location of all existing proposed deed restrictions, covenants, we have that, location of water. Natural features. Is there any water or anything going through the property?
There's a runoff.
Like just a swale?
Yeah.
It's not always running, it's not a brook?
No.
Well, there's a, uh, what do you, you know the spot, right? Down next to Arthur Levitt's property, something comes in another way behind our house. There's a swale that does not always have water in it, but down over there, there's a cul-de-sac, I mean a culvert. Yeah, but that's not on.
I think it does.
This property.
There's a seasonal brook that's kinda goes on the property line. It doesn't, I wouldn't call it a factor in this decision.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be threatened by anything.
The runoff is from, it comes out from under the airstrip.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's a culvert up there that comes across in a bunch of different little contributory, uh, things and then, yeah.
It's a snow melt thing.
Yeah.
Basically, right?
Yeah.
Downpour.
Then downpours, yeah.
And you're not seeking a sign? Or you are seeking a sign?
Well, I would say that that would really be if, if it's one of those deals, if we could put a sign, great, we could. If not, we can survive without one, right? We'll just make sure that our street number is visible.
Uh, well, so it would be during the site plan review process, if you wanted to do a sign, that you would be presenting that.
Which number is that?
It's number nineteen under plat, plat requirements, location of the proposed sign. So this would be like if you were in a, in a typical thing, you'd be developing the whole, get the survey, where's the new construction going, where are all the things and signage would be one of the things.
We wanted, we could probably come back later and ask about it.
Ask about signage.
Right now.
Yeah.
And no change to lighting? Lighting would be the same?
Yeah, just basic front of the house lighting, yeah. And we had a pole at the end of the driveway and a pole at the end of our sidewalk. Neither one are currently working, but they're there.
If it's existing, then we can waive this stuff.
It's still self-declined a lot, it is.
Alright, so on some maps or plans required. Plans and profiles of roads, not doing any new roads. Curbing. None of this. Yeah, I am seeing exempting basically everything except for what we talked about at the beginning of this, so. Yep.
Yeah.
So it's really the documents required at the top. The application.
Yep.
A, uh, we'll just use the tax map for the plat plan, I think. Notification, number three. Filing fees, number four.
And the notification was just the first three of those, right? Dressed on all forty butters and, and actually where the applicant, so.
Uh, yeah. Um, yeah, we can waive applicant and owner. It'll save you seven dollars per, since it's going to yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the neighbors, the butters. Filing fees, we'll get to the fees. State town driveway permit, lot of record, so waiving that. Six, I'll pick up the federal state.
Yeah.
Town chief approvals and certifications.
Yeah, that was the fire chief in Conway for the occupancy.
Yep. There are.
Include the deeds or easements.
So that would be the requirements for site plan.
And when would you like all that from us? Sooner or later?
Uh, so it's twenty days before the next meeting is the requirement.
Okay.
If you get them sooner, great. Twenty days is enough time for us to do the mailings and send them out, all that stuff. So as long as it's twenty days before the thirteenth of June.
Bingo, sure. The only thing that's gonna take any time to, uh, to possibly accomplish is communicating with the fire chief and setting the date to meet with them.
Yep. And then getting the names and addresses of all the butters that's right out there on the table, I don't know if you saw, or familiar with it, but their tax maps in the lot.
We can do that.
The addresses for each owner of each lot, that's right there in the public access right there.
Now, um, the notification itself, is that something that you, that's a letter that you write?
So you supply with the, the, you supply a check and pre-printed labels.
Okay.
And then we do the processing of sending out the actual mailings to the butters.
Yeah, we can do that.
Oh, yes. So we have, we will hold a public hearing, uh, a notice will go to the Conway Sun, that's so it's, it's these things. And I'll send this to you. This is the boundary line adjustment, but it's very similar. I just don't have it pulled up right now. But I think there's an administrative fee of a hundred, as for the time. A butters, you have four of them, seven dollars each. Uh, publication to the Conway Sun is forty dollars. There's no engineering review. Uh, we won't have a recording. I don't think there's a recording fee and I don't think there's an L chip fee, cause this isn't, um, again, this is a boundary line adjustment form. I gotta get the right one for site plan review, but. So it's basically just those costs. I think administrative fee, seven dollars per butter, forty dollars for the Conway Sun, and that might be it. About that. That's great. I'll send all the papers to you by email. Any other, any things?
Really appreciate your time.
Really do, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, alright, nice to meet you all. Thank you for coming. You want to keep one?
Sure. Well, yeah, we do have a couple here anyway, but if you don't care, that'll. Yeah. Oh, that's better. Thank you for having me. You want to know one?
You want?
No, I don't need one.
Okay.
No, I don't need one.
Thanks again.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great evening.
Yeah, you too.
Good night. You can take it.
Good, so we just had a few other quickie things, uh, minutes. Motion to approve.
Make motion to approve. Um, I don't think it's required there. I was, it didn't mention. I, I emailed it just last minute, so you probably didn't see it, is just, um, that I, uh, I was a voting member, I think, last week and that wasn't put in there.
Okay.
I don't know if it's required.
Mars wants to make some motion to approve the April eleventh minutes.
I'll second it.
And, second, none, all those are paper?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Um, and then just to follow up on last week's the inquiry about subdividing the land.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we got three responses and they all pretty much agreed with each other that it's a no-go.
Okay.
And here's what, I can, I can forward these to you, you can read them at your own. Um, this is from New Hampshire Municipal. Mars, would you mind closing this up? Thank you. Alright, so this is from New Hampshire Municipal, uh, hinges on whether it's a class six road or a private road. What it is a private road.
It's a private road.
And they, they have an easement on the road. They do not have, um, what's the other term? I'll get to it in the next document, but. Right, therefore, right, so lot forty-two only has access to a private road. Therefore, in order for the lot to be subdivided, the new lot would also need to obtain some form of road tax, road access for either its own right of way or other means. If that's possible, then you need to follow up with your select board and your other ordinances. So they need to find, the only way they can really build is if they can somehow find a way to make that private road a town road. Which is not happening.
Steep.
So that's New Hampshire Municipal's response.
I'm not saying it's not gonna happen, but they have to go through that.
It's a huge expense.
Oh, it's a huge expense. That needs to happen before they can come to us.
Right, and they would need to upgrade to town road standards. They would need to make that road come up to town road standards, which is a big expense. And then go through the subdivision. And they would need to get all of the uh, what's, is it, that's actually, no, it's a different, map nine A. I'll just pull it up so we can see it, but uh, it goes through another person's property, of course. Alright, so we're talking about this property here. Which is lot forty-two. Which is lot forty-two, is the one they're wanting to subdivide coming off of D Smith Lane?
Yeah, I think it's that.
Um, which is going through someone else's property, lot number forty, and maybe even someone else's down here, forty-seven. Uh, so they would need to get agreement from two or three other property owners to agree together to pay in themselves to bring this up to town road standards, and then get the town involved, need to adopt it as a town road before they could subdivide, is what it boils down to. But I'll just read North Country Council's response as well. To consider the question of whether or not the parcel has sufficient frontage to create a subdivision with adequate access, given the status of Smith Lane. First frame the topic as it's applicable to state statute, then consider the town provision. So the state statute says that these conditions must be met. There can be no building nor building permits issued unless the street giving access to the lot meets one of the following, has legal status as a classified road. That's one of the things this doesn't, it doesn't have legal status as a road, so it doesn't even have that, it's just an easement on a private road. Um, corresponds to a street shown on an official map, or a street shown on a subdivision, it doesn't do that. Um, is a class six road meeting certain conditions. So the, private is class six, right?
Class six is just a non-maintained town road, so the only town, best, yes. So the only five, the only class six town road we have is the town of Albany's Burchill Road, which goes right here.
Yeah.
Goes from here to Waldo.
So private roads are not in a class of anything?
No.
Okay.
Well, they would, I, I can look it up, but it's five or better is what they're referencing, and-
Yeah.
It's not, doesn't.
Yeah. So it does not meet the minimum, or it has to meet these minimum standards and procedures, which it doesn't. As discussed. Uh, this is a little bit before, alright. So we did determine that it is the easement, and our ordinances do not allow it. Basically, North Country Council's thing.
Right.
Um, so as such, the planning board cannot find the lots proposed to conform to the standards in the ordinance, and could not approve such lots without relief from the zoning board. However, so you could petition to the zoning board, however, the zoning board cannot waive the provisions of the statute above. As such, Smith Lane would likely need to become a private or public road in order to pursue a new subdivision. So again, they would have to upgrade the road
Right.
to a bare minimum of a private road that meets town standards.
Right.
And that's for safety issues.
Uh, yeah, right.
It's for zoning, really, right?
And, and the point of the zoning is so that when the house is burning, the fire trucks can get in.
Yeah.
The gist of it is health and safety, right, can the ambulance get in, can the fire trucks get in? And then this is from, uh, Matt Serge, Town Council. So you need to consider both the state statute and local zoning, uh, he references the North Country Council thing. Importantly, the statute preempts less stringent local regulations, and in addition, lots cannot be grandfathered from the statutory requirement. So the state statute overrules less stringent local, um, statute, uh, local ordinances. Since it's an easement and not a public highway or private road, the lot cannot be developed under RSA six seventy-four forty-one. So here's their option, the proper course of action would be for the landowners in conjunction with other butters of easement to convert the easement to a private road in order to try and come into compliance with the state statute. Please note, however, that even if the road is private, the statute still requires the following conditions to be met in order to approve the lot. We have to issue, vote to issue building permits, uh, the town doesn't assume responsibility for private road. Has to be recorded at the deeds, alright. Yeah, oh yes, right, the amount of frontage, you still need to meet the local ordinance, our ordinance, which says that the frontage differs depending on whether the lot pre-exists the zoning ordinance, but regardless of its length, the frontage must be along a state or town road. Because the subject lot does not have any frontage along a state or town road, the landowners would need to apply for advantage from the zoning board adjustment, so. I, I'm gonna send this to them, and I'm not gonna speak too much myself, I'm just gonna send on the documents and say, here are the, the findings from three different agencies giving us counsel, and, uh.
Yeah. It's too bad.
I don't think we need to vote on it, other than I'm just gonna forward this information to them.
I'm glad you want it forward, yeah, because to me, yeah, I, you know, I didn't think about this myself, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they wanted guidance, and it was a very unique situation.
Yeah.
You know, so that's the guidance that we can offer them.
Yeah. That'll keeps us out of hot water, you know, go above, it's smart, yeah.
Right, right.
I mean, it's too bad, you wanna see people go to the subdivide, but if it, um,
Yeah.
they have a lot going against them on this one.
Right. More than a few hurdles to get through.
Yeah, that's for sure. Those old lots have funny access, those old lots, especially on pass corner roads, there's a lot of them.
Like that, yeah.
Yeah, well, they're just landlocked out there, or they have a funny easement on them, and they're big tracks, you know, it's unusual, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, that wasn't the only one that was landlocked.
Yeah, there's a couple, there's a bunch of them out there, so, but that's an old road, so.
So that's all I have.
Okay. Make a motion to, you, make a motion to a adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Maybe adjourned it?
Thank you, thank you.
Seven fifty.